Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular Board Meeting of Dundee Township for November 2025. I call this meeting in order at 7:05 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Dray, here. Trustee Dray, here. Trustee Fixmer.
Here.
Trustee Harney.
Here.
Supervisor Shaw.
Here. Okay. Thank you. We have a quorum. I ask that you all rise with us for the Pledge of Felicitations. Madam Clerk, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Executive Session. I will make the motion. Can someone please second it?
Second.
Okay. So the motion is made by me and seconded by Trustee Harney. We will have the Executive Session. If you can please exit and wait for us. Thank you. So we can resume the meeting. Okay, we'll resume the meeting at 7:21 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Dray, here. Trustee Dray, here. Trustee Fixmer.
Here.
Trustee Harney.
Here.
Supervisor Shaw.
Here. Okay, the next part of our meeting is going to be Public Comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the Board at this time?
Oh, Lori Fester.
Lori Fester, yes. All right, Lori Fester, I'm a member of Dundee National Yards as well as the Gotham Garden Club. And the poster here, I want to talk about the Milwaukee Mini Forest that was planted at Dixie on October 25th. So on October 25th, the Gotham Garden Club and 27 dedicated volunteers helped to successfully plant a Milwaukee Mini Forest. And it's one of the first ones in the northwest suburbs of Chicago. And it's planted in Dixie, Grange, the northeast area where it's wooded, kind of wooded area. And the Mini Forest will be creating a dense, rapidly growing pollinator habitat. There's 207 native trees and shrubs. There's a listing on the poster if you'd like to see specifically the different varieties that we have in there. It's a 936 square foot area with a path through the center. So once it's established and the fencing comes down, visitors can walk right through and enjoy the Mini Forest. So the initial concept was inspired by the Lucas Readers Book Club, who read the book, The Mini Forest Revolution. And the Gotham Garden Club members were invited to the book club. And then we took reign and championed this project. So it took about 22 months from when we first met the book club to the actual planting date to get this through the ground. So. So the Mini, if you're interested about what the Milwaukee method is, it promotes a dense, biodiverse ecosystem that will grow 10 times faster than the normal tree planting method. Just putting a whole, there's what happens is there's the area is dug, chewed, deep, with compost and it's lots of fertilizers put in. So it creates a very good habitat for the trees once they're planted from the get-go. And they're planted very closely together, which creates competition between all the plants. So they grow deeper roots and they grow taller very quickly. It'll take 23, 20 to 30 years to grow trees, but normally it would take 100 years in the normal planting methods. So. The Garden Club, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So we were able to secure some grants. We got $3,500 from Nycor Gas Charitable Fund and also the Nature Conservancy. We got $2,100 to help pay for the trees and the shrubs, the fencing, and the deliveries from the compost. And then Green Soils Company in East Dundee, they actually donated the actual compost. We just had to pay for the delivery. There was a bulk of fertilizers, donated fertilizer, tools and such. So hopefully this will.
Sorry, sorry. Your three minutes is up. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board at this time? Okay, I will close this.
I'd just like to follow up and say that I attended the planting and it was incredibly well organized. The volunteers were incredibly enthusiastic. Everybody was just having a great time, enthusiastic and fun. And in fact, we even had a few new volunteers for our program that came from the plantings that day. So. And in planting the Milwaukee Forest, these small forests have the potential to really restore our oak woodlands that we've lost so many of. We've probably lost 70, 80% of our oak woodlands in this area. So it's a wonderful way to start addressing that loss. So it was great.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board at this time? Yeah, sure.
I'd like to speak about the Mini Forest as well. I was very impressed with the Garden Club members who are also specific ones, part of Friends of Dundee Natural Area Board, who secured four grants for this project. They're total, more than $6,000 toward the project. And I'm kind of a gals and set sort of person. So I was very impressed at their work in securing grants. This is all a donation to the township.
Thank you so much. Okay, I will close this portion of the meeting. This evening, our first presentation is from Chris Kaya, President of Forest Preserves of Kane County, AKA Cowboy Chris. I've been dying to do this. You have 15 sharp minutes.
15 minutes?
That's it.
Well, I've got three pages. I'm good. It's big print, so I can read it when I get nervous in front of people. Just to announce, more thank you Supervisor and Trustees for allowing me to speak. Always Township has a special place in my heart as well as a number of other people, obviously, this evening. And announced that we extended the lease of the forest preserve, extended the lease. I am still on the forest preserve board. I'm not the president anymore for the barn at the Switzer Engineering. And we drove a hard bargain. We're charging a dollar a year for the next 15 years. I think it is until 2024. So the barn is yours. I know that Township is taking good care of it and actually put quite a bit of money into it just to make sure that it's functional and stays the attractive history that we have, maintains it. So congratulations. Thank you. It was overwhelmingly voted for, of course. So win, win, win for the township and win for the county and the forest preserve. So thank you for your cooperation on that. And don't hesitate to ask for anything else that we can help with at Switzer or any of the other open spaces that you have around Dundee Township. We'll see what we can do as much as we can. A couple of, three or four or five announcements this evening that county limits. Besides that, county limits. The county passed a resolution, approved resolution on Monday restricting county-owned parking lots, vacant lots and garages from being used as staging, processing or operational sites for federal civil immigration enforcement. The policy enforces compliance with Illinois Trust Act, which prohibits detaining individuals solely on immigration detainers without a judicial warrant. It also aligns Kane County with state requirements under Executive Order 25-06 and the Illinois Accountability Commission. That was passed on Monday. New, we also will have, secondly, and really importantly, to Dundee Township, right next to us, or actually in our township, on, at 2150 Point Boulevard in Elgin, we opened the building. The Health Department is moving into 2150, which is just past the steak, Johnny's Steakhouse on Point Boulevard, north of, you go south on Randall. When you hit, just before you hit 90, you turn left before you go over 90. Down that road, there were the steak houses on the left-hand side. It's a big building with 40,000 square feet.
Oh, Jimmy's Char House. Is it Jimmy's Char House?
Jimmy's, that's it.
Okay.
See, I get in front of this crowd. I forget everything. Jimmy's. Was it, what did I say?
Johnny's. Maybe they can rename it.
It was in the wrong slot, Chris. It's in the wrong place in my brain.
Carol.
Sorry.
The, yeah, so Jimmy's Char House. Thank you for the correction. Because I want you to be able to find it because I'm inviting you as well as everyone else. We're going to be, the attendee plan is on the 17th of December. At 9 o'clock, we're going to have our public health meeting there at 9:00 AM. And then we'll have a tour of the building. It's sort of a soft opening. It's not a grand opening because they're just getting moved in. They still have boxes and things and there's still some work to do. The finished product will probably end up maybe late this summer, late next summer in '26. But they're in. We were out there just taking a little tour. Cheryl Strathman from Elgin is the board member that's the chair of that committee this afternoon. And we're excited that we're bringing the Health Department to something closer than an hour and 20 minutes away. So we're keeping the building down in a war for the people down there. And then we'll have a branch up, it'll be a big branch because it's big. It'll also contain the clerk's office. County clerk will then now have a satellite office in this end of the county. So you can have all the services that they provide. I'm sure I've got it written right down here somewhere. Eventually, the building will have full services for not only the Health Department and the clerk for full services there, but also space for the coroner and a relatively large public meeting area that will probably be available next summer, beginning next summer, which should be available for anyone like other governmental offices that include the township to have meetings that should be able to be scheduled there. Still a lot of work to go, but it's open now. So look forward to the 17th sometime late in the morning. You'll all get an announcement, hopefully an invitation to join us. I'm not sure it'll be grand ribbon cutting because we will still have a lot of work to do. But at least we'll know that the services are open and people, it's available for people, services are available for people there. We at the Government Center on December 10th, we'll be having the Tollway event at, from 12 to 4 in the afternoon. And visitors can get free iPass sticker tags, open new accounts or pay invoices with no fees or fines and no appointment is needed. If you're feeling creative, the Division of Transportation, KDOT, has bought some new snowplows, I think three of them. And we're having, we're launching a naming contest for each of those. So thank you, let's think of caps also. Maybe Sir Plows a lot or Austin Roadman or Tino's or Jake. But many names will appear on the snowplows. We'll have the names updated on the snowplows. And the winners will also receive an exclusive behind-the-scenes tour. I know this has, you guys have been waiting for this, tour of the winter operations of our KDOT out there. Way out, turning the campus up there. About halfway down. We are going to be planning, we pass this Monday as well. We'll be placing a historical marker and planting a Liberty Tree, which is approved for the courthouse grounds on Third Street in Geneva this coming year in commemoration of the Revolutionary War patriots that are buried in Kane County. I think there's three or four of them. It's led by the Elias Kent Kane Chapter of the National Daughters, National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, American Revolution, NSDAR. And it is in commemoration of our 250th anniversary of this town for the nation. And last but not least, the county has named a historian. This is a state-established office that the counties can opt into or not. We, I don't know if you know Kenneth Chepro, who was fairly well-known in politics in Kane County, is among other things, a avid historian and amazing to listen to. He's a wealth of knowledge. He is our honorary historian. And he, if you listen to our meetings throughout this next year, he's going to be doing next little spots on what occurred in this day in 1776 or around the revolution, just in honor of our 250th anniversary of our country's birth. The revolution continues. We are part of the revolution, started 250 years ago. And I invite you to all participate as well because there seems like there's a lot of revolution lately that we need to do. And I'm also, we have the new tree line, which is our quarterly report. And I'll leave some copies out here for everyone, which is, this is a L.L. copy, but you can get it online at the forest preserve. Unless there's any questions, that's my.
Well, I do have a question. So can you extend? So can you extend the IGA to giving us a presence in your building for a dollar? Go ahead, you can sit.
The one over there?
The new one, the 40,000 square feet.
Things will be available and I'll make sure that you guys, yeah.
Yeah, a dollar is our prize.
Is it?
All right then.
Well, I know how to drive a hard bargain, I'll tell you that.
Well, thank you for your help.
Maybe for a dollar. Well, that's actually a good point because that's what I wanted to be available to everybody here if we have a lot of space.
Yeah.
And there's going to be some good-sized meeting rooms, so yeah.
Sounds good. I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, it should be, I'll make sure that's available at least for, I'm not sure about, you've got such a nice spot here. It's not too far away. But for meetings, for large meetings, because the, some of the area over there is just, I don't think there's anything bigger in our county.
Yeah.
At least not, except maybe the Q Center or something.
Yeah.
We'll have some good meeting room space. Yes, ma'am, you can.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, the, sorry.
What was the street number again on that? It's Point Boulevard.
You know me in the announcement, 2150 Point Boulevard.
Thank you.
I've always, numbers always, I'm dyslexic with numbers. So let me look that up, but I'm sure it's 2150. I was just there.
Okay, our next presentation is from Carol Weinheimer, Open Space Volunteer and FDNA member. Ms. Weinheimer, the floor is yours.
Thank you Supervisor Shaw and trustees. I've been a resident of Dundee Township for over 47 years. And I just wanted to say that, give a big shout out to our volunteers on our workday of November 12. We had the biggest turnout ever at the Dixie workday. We had 26 volunteers, we had three staff members. And we accomplished a lot. So we just wanted to say what a great group it was. You can go to slide two now. So this is a picture of the group of volunteers that showed up that day. About 10:30 or 11 o'clock, we take a break and this is during our break time to catch our breath. But as you can see, everybody's happy, we're all smiling because we're all doing something that we really love to do, which is to be out there working.
You need to go nuts.
Now, here it is, we cleared, it's probably one of the worst sections in Dixie that I've ever seen. I can give many comments to people about that. They didn't realize how bad it was until you found them. Volunteers worked throughout the year and they came in seven, really four days. Many of them working over 100 hours a year. Go to slide two, please. Okay, this one. So for just that one workday, the going rate for a volunteer is $39.40. So with 26 people times the amount of hours that they worked, it came to 83 hours total. So 83 hours times $39.40 came to $3,270.20. So that's just for that one day of work that the volunteers put in on their own time without any pay or benefits coming their way. So now please go to slide four, five and six. You can go through those roles. So like I said, we work in all kinds of weather. This is a winter one. You can see we're all bundled up and we're enjoying some hot coffee. But this is during our break time. It's a social time to get to talk to each other and get to know each other better because when you show up at 9 o'clock, you just start working. You don't sit and talk to people. You come and you start working. And then that break time is where you catch your breath and you talk. So go to slide five, please. This is one more in the summertime. You can notice one gentleman is in short sleeves. So we do work in the heat, we work in the cold. And then the next slide, please advance to. So this, this one I particularly remember because it was 15 degrees and not many volunteers showed up. But these were the hardy ones that came out to work that day. And you can see the smoke there. That's how we stay warm in the cold weather during the brush that we cut. So you're probably wondering, why do these volunteers come out and work? They don't get paid any wages or vacation time or benefits. They work in the cold of the winter and the heat of the summer. Are they crazy? Well, yes, maybe we are somewhat crazy. We are crazy for anything to do with the environment, plants, trees, birds, and the abundant wildlife that all Open Space are home. They, we do it for the love of the environment, knowing that when we finish up and leave the worksite for the day, we have left in a better, in better shape than when we started. A healthier place in the community to enjoy and a healthier place where we all live. Dundee Township is known for its strong volunteer base and its Open Space properties. In the state of Illinois, and these are some interesting facts. In the state of Illinois, there are 102 counties with 1,426 townships, but only a handful of those 1,426 townships actually have Open Space properties. Dundee Township was a pioneer in this field with Open Space, thanks to their foresight to go and buy land and set it aside before it was developed. Open Space land attracts many homeowners, attracts people that come to the community, spend their money because they're all looking for green areas in the community that are free to the public to use. So when I said that we get no benefits, well, we really do. So there are benefits to being a volunteer. They are not always obvious to all, but to a volunteer, they are very clear. After clearing an area of toxic invasives, muted native plants will emerge. These plants will provide nutritious food for birds, pollinators and other wildlife. They also provide beauty and enjoyment for people walking here. Now please advance to slide, slide seven. So after clearing an area, this beautiful prairie rose did emerge. And these pictures are all taken in Dixie. Now please advance to slide eight. And this is a prairie tension. It comes to life after spring prescribed burn. And slide nine. This is the queen of the prairie. It blooms in August where honeysuckle used to flourish. Now this area is a beautiful hillside wetland area where this plant thrives. And now please go to slide ten. So in the woods, we also have some neat things inside the prairie. This is the chicken of the woods mushroom. It was found in Dixie this year. It grows on dead rotting trees that usually fall, usually in the fall. This tree itself is about this big. Curvy knows which one it is. It's right on the trail by the three trees of meat. And actually, part of the tree fell over on the trail and the guys had to cut it. It was, it was massive. And usually every year it produces this mushroom. So when you're walking in the woods, you will see this in the distance, this bright orange mushroom growing on the tree. And that's really a beautiful sight to see. So then go to the next slide, please.
Oh, yeah.
We also do, we also do it for the joy of knowing we have helped the wildlife that inhabit the Open Space properties. So here is a tree frog that Dan found this year at Homewoods. Cute little guy. And now advance to slide 12, please. This one was taken in Dixie. This is, I believe it's a baby pheasant. It's hiding in the prairie grasses. And now go to the next one, please. And this is a brown hog, sleeping on it. And when I took this, I didn't realize that brown hogs could find trees, but apparently they can because he was sitting there.
Cute.
All nestled and cute. And then the next slide, please. And this was taken actually right up back my house in the prairie. This is a young buck hiding in the prairie, just observing and watching. So all of the work we do in the Open Space properties helps these animals survive. Without our help, a lot of them wouldn't be there. And if they were there, you wouldn't be able to see them because they'd be hidden in the brush that covers everything.
You're over two minutes. I'm just letting you know.
And then go to the next slide, please. And this will be the last one. And finally, we do it for the joy of knowing that is the right thing to do for our community.
Carol, I apologize. You have more time. You have more time. I apologize, yeah.
And our planet earth.
Seven minutes, sorry.
Where children can't get dirty, run around, have fun, build forts made of sticks and connect with nature. And this is, if anybody has been to Library Springs Curiosity Shed, have you all been there? So it's a brainchild, I believe, of Rosen George. It's a shed that has skulls, rocks, antlers, anything that kids would like in the outdoors. So this was taken at Library Springs and it's, we're keeping our Open Space properties healthy and happy for safer families to enjoy. So that's my presentation. Anybody have questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting. The next item on the agenda is Reports. We will start with Mental Health Board Report. Trustee Harney.
Just a second. Let me get it out here.
Oh.
I should have been more on top of this. I'm sorry.
I can let the assessor go first if you want.
I'm sorry?
Do you want me to let the assessor go first?
Yeah, that would be good.
Assessor? You're up.
Good evening. Good to see you again. Now, a lot has changed. The staff right now is out in the field. They're also in-house working, but we're in the field doing residential permits, looking for decks, additions. We get permits from the various entities. Some we have to go and actually get from like Algonquin or Elgin. They're supposed to be sending them to us. Everybody does it a little different. We are getting the permits real, all of them actually. Sometimes we'll take the USB and transfer those records. Elgin has a SharePoint that we can download blueprints from. So it's a process matching up the permits with our properties. But that's part of our job, is called discovery to assess all the property that is taxable. Additions for garages or just four-season rooms or decks or so forth. This is the time of year we have a little time to do that, catch up on that. Commercial-wise, we're also going out. There's not a lot of commercial construction. It has slowed down, especially industrial. We only have one new industrial building going up. No gas centers that I know of. A whole bunch of data centers going down where the old Sears was. And they're also, I think they're about to go across the street west of the old Sears, East Dundee, west of, and I said, but that's Co-County. But it's still close. And it's, it affects our power. That's why those data centers are going in. There's a lot of power right in that immediate area. And actually, we even, we have a peaker plant here in Dundee Township. It's a gas turbine peaker plant, so we also supply some of that power. A little bit up here and there, but I hope you don't mind. We have a new hotel coming online, a gas station, one large industrial. It's shifting this year as far as new construction. We were heavily into the industrial, very little residential for ten years. We are now seeing residential new construction, and those will be hitting the books this year and next year. And I can give you more numbers at our next meeting. I think you'd be interested in that for our budgeting, levy and so forth. And that's also something I've been working on, is the preliminary budget for my office and staff. And other than that, we're also reconciling some of the values from our hearings and just doing internal reports and cleaning up from hearings, getting caught up from hearings. Right now, I'm still kind of estimating roughly, very rough, three to fifty million dollars in assessed value of new construction coming on forward this year and next year. That's a good point. That's all I have, any questions?
Thank you, assessor. Okay. You ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Mental health board meeting, we met last week. We allocated six hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars for a number of organizations that submitted grants for funding. I can make these available, they'll be in the minutes, I won't read them all off. And we also discussed further the police social worker program. It's in process at this point. The, the police departments with Carpenter'sville and Lead are talking amongst themselves. We sent them a sort of a proposal or an umbrella type of document for how this is all going to work. And they are discussing it between the different departments, they will come back. And so that's just in process. I know, I spoke with the supervisor and she and I would like to see some, a few things that are different. But this is a good thing to build on. It's not as robust as I would like to see it. It starts out with one social worker working out of Carpenter'sville who will report to one of the captains in the Carpenter'sville Police Department. And Shapoli and I both discussed having a few more. I've spoken also with Chief Sean Green. And we all think that for the sixty-five thousand people in Dundee Township, maybe three to four social workers would be a better fit for us. But that's something we can discuss in the future. Mark Avalar has been the president now for five terms. He stepped down as president at the last meeting. His term ends at the end of December, so he will be there for the December meetings. And then he will be off on his own and hopefully a good resource. I will be taking over as president pro tempore. That term ends in June when Mark's term ends. And for, as president, but not as my membership on the board. We will have two more meetings. The seven oh eight board will meet twice more in the month of December, once on December eleventh and once on December sixteenth. We will be interviewing applicants for the two vacant positions. So we will have advice or, I guess vetting is a better word to term, for this board when we select, hopefully, new members, when this board selects new members for the seven oh eight board at the December township board meeting. And I'm not sure that we'll do that, that's up to the supervisor, of course. But that would, the recommendations of the seven oh eight board will be available at that time for this board. And that is as much as I think as said, thank you.
Okay, commissioner?
Anything?
You already sent it to us. Okay, sounds good. Okay, then we will go with open space, Kirby, Liz.
How's everybody doing? Nice to see everybody, thanks for having me. Just the last four weeks of open space activity as we get into, out of the growing season and into the end of November already, into the kind of the dormant, the fall and winter season. Our transition has completely, pretty much shifted over to a few non-native invasive tree brush removal projects, like what Carol spoke about, kind of a thrust of our priority right now. Along with those comes the volunteer, some volunteer workdays, but we're also able to get in some prescribed burns over the past couple of weeks, which is exciting for us. And then we have our wild pickers busy again doing all the processing, all the seed that they collected over the past few months. Some of which are here today in the audience, so thanks to those, those people for doing all that work. But again, just to highlight, so some, some burns carried out over the past week at Jelkie Creek. These were successful burns. This is, this is the property that did not receive fire this spring. So we want to make sure we got to some areas this fall. This will help us do some winter management tasks in the next couple of months. And then also kind of prep the site for the coming growing season twenty twenty-six, when all those, all that bad stuff will kind of green up early in that black earth. And then we'll be able to kind of see it and be able to target it and, you know, continue managing that nice wetland prairie complex at Jelkie. And then we're able to also get a burn in at Library Springs in the woods. One of those spots was an area just recently cleared by staff and volunteers. Little, about acre, acre and a half of old woodland communities. So it was nice to get some of those leaves burned in there and we'll be excited to see what comes up. This newly cleared and now burned for the first time, little woodland on the east side of Library. As I said, the wild prairie crickers, pickers have been busy this week. You gotta add that one, pickle pepper. Processing all the seed over the, collected over the past few months, I think thirteen species were collected. A lot of this data is still coming in as far as numbers and quantities and, you know, the monetary value that equates to. So I hope to have that in future reports, but this is just a huge thing for the township open space. Seed just gets more and more expensive each year. And the more clearing we do, burning we do, file of work, new work, it's just important to have that seed, immediately put into the system, kind of helps us battle all the, all the, you know, non-native invasives. We're trying to manage, just touching on some, you know, workdays this time of year, like I said, we're pulling into workdays, clearing woody species out of the woods, out of the prairies, the wetlands. A lot of volunteer days. We've had some photos here from the before and aftershocks at Helm, clearing that nice oak hickory woodland.
That looks great.
Recent work at Salamander is getting us closer to some of our management goals around some of the wetland complexes there and continuing work in that oak hickory forest. And then the bottom picture there shows kind of our first, with this current volunteer base we have, this is kind of our first workday. And I notice I didn't put the location, that's at Jelkie Creek. And this is an area rebuilding black locusts and kind of replacing it with, with oak community. So like I said, it was nice to have maybe about fifteen or so people at that first workday at Jelkie. Hope to have more at that project, it's such a cool property and deserving of some of our, our great volunteer crew. And then other, just recently this week, not in the report, we had a workday at Library Springs. That's the area where we, we started the workday and I kind of shifted some of us over to the prescribed burn. And then we just had a great workday today up at Baseway in the infield, kind of expanding that infield prairie. And then I have a picture here from the workday that Carol spoke about up near the Braywood Trailhead at Dixie. And we had all those people show out, show up and it was a small little corner of the preserve, but, right, a pretty nasty corner with, you know, old growth, huge buckthorn and honeysuckle and, you know, some gnarly weedy tree, tree species. So a lot of piles there, I think I counted over twenty piles we made that, that still had yet to be burned up. We, we had such a beautiful day to, to work on that day, but the wind was the killer for us with sixty acres of grassy fields downwind. We could not burn up any of those piles, so, you know, hopefully we'll wait for conditions to kind of allow us to do that. So we can do that a little bit safer. And then just to wrap up, some more signage at Dixie. In this case, signage to honor the namesake of the preserve, Dixie Briggs from, so a sign explaining a little bit of her background down by the name tree channel, that's Dixie Creek. And then a little offshoot tributary of that creek is Wilson Creek. And that is to honor, you know, one of the best nature's caretakers out there, Al Wilson. So he was one of the original site stewards at Dixie. And, you know, set the high, the bar high and Carol's, Carol's ran with it, so it's been great. So those two signs are in now, so people can get a little information about some of the people that helped us in the past. And we'll just continue on into December. Any questions for me?
If you could please talk a little bit and let's, let everybody know about the garage situation we had right before we got into the IGA.
The what situation?
The garage situation.
Oh, at the barn?
Hmm.
Oh, yeah, the barn, so we, just real quick, we moved in there, the barn in twenty ten, I think it was. So for the past fifteen years, we've been kind of, the roll-up door at the, at the barn was, it's kind of one of the standard storage type of unit, roll-up doors, you know, meant to really only go up maybe once or twice a week, not, not a day, every day. So it finally, it finally just stopped working and, you know, completely failed. But we were able to, it took a couple of months to get the door shipped in and installed. We were able to, you know, get a new roll-up door, right? It's, 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 the security door to the barn, it keeps some of the critters out of the barn, but it's really the security door that's kind of hidden behind those, the traditional, you know, historic bi-fold doors there. So it was, it was a good amount of money, but it was, it was a lot, you know, something we need, right? It's like having a house without the front door. So it was, it's kind of one of those no brainers, but we're happy to have the IGA agreement. I'll be happy if the barn's still there fifteen years.
It better be, we just put in almost eight thousand dollars for that.
The barn might be collapsed around it, but it'll still work. So we're happy about that, yeah. That's just, you know, it's just a little thing, it's awesome working in, in, you know, a hundred-year-old dairy barn, but it comes with all the, you know, things that you expect in a hundred-year-old dairy barn. So it's nice when a little bit of modern technology can help us out.
Thank you, Kirby.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, next one will be cemetery. Eric Salis, our manager.
Hello, good evening, everyone. On this, this report, we had a total of fourteen burial homes conducted this month. We've had nine graves sales were sold during the reporting period. Six new cemetery deeds were issued. Our, our total sales for the month were twenty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-five. In other news, we are proud to announce the addition of up to fourteen hundred plus new grave sites available, available at our cemetery. There is, there was a picture of this section, but it got submitted a little late.
Oh, there, no, right there.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
So you can, yeah, it's the, if you're driving up past twenty-five, you'll see the, the wide open area almost to the sides of the prairie as well of where the new addition. You can clearly see the break of where all the current hundreds of stones are and the new area that finally got stamped, lotted, and been, it was a, it was a big project in the making, but finally we were able to open up. And it's, we're set to start selling graves as early as after Thanksgiving. Reef orders are currently being accepted as well, which after Thanksgiving, we are, on Black Friday, we are receiving our, our, our normal wreaths orders from Santa's wreaths. And then, and then also in production, preparations are on the way to participate with wreaths across America in which builds are donation based, so that all the, the thousands of veterans that are in our cemetery, east side and west side, people can donate to that and have veterans put a wreath on their, on their, on their wreath as well. We had a, we had a valuable visit from the Cal Township Supervisor. She expressed enthusiasm and strong interest in the cemetery's current operations, particularly our column burial, which she was pleased to learn about and its management, user, usage and future, and the future of her township. So she's actually implementing a, a, a column burial similar to how we have. We have two column burials actually. And when that second, that second one reaches seventy-five percent capacity, we already have provisioned plans to get a third one installed. I'd like to welcome Ms. Pekar Unadid to our, our new administrative position. If you'd like to hi, say hi to everybody. And she brings strong professional experience in banking, financial management, and regulatory compliance. So that's making her a valuable asset to our administrative team. Little, little bit of active items to go into the future in which we're preparing for, we're, we're preparing for the new grave sites, for the new sales when it opens up. I know we, we had a, we have somewhat of a call list for, people were literally calling in to ask when that section was going to open up so they can buy plots, so we're going to start calling from there for, for sales as far as first come, first served, sort of the old, alongside with the regular customers that are calling in to inquire. And then we're going to finalize reefer logistics as far as how many we're going to put out on our end. We do sell, we do sell wreaths on our end alongside with people calling for, for the donation based ones. It does change every year. I remember the very first year that we did it, there was possibly more than one thousand five hundred, close to over a thousand donations for wreaths. This year, just, just because more economic hardships, the donations are quite not there yet. I don't know if we're, we're possibly eighty, fifty percent, maybe out there. But with talking to some of the coroners, there's time that close, when it gets closer to the event, there's big donators, big donators that donate themselves a big chunk, so we're hoping that people still get those through. And then, and yeah, so that's a little bit of wrapping up the cemetery. Any questions about anything?
Yes, so let's go about the plumbing issue.
Ah, I didn't put so.
It's fine, Liz, do you, do you mind sharing the slides? Sorry, that was my presentation, but he can have it, that's fine. I think he can speak better on that.
Yeah, I can leave that there with the technical.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I put together a few slides for you, yeah.
It's more embarrassing than that. We were down without water and running toilets for about maybe a week and a half, so, because we had a, we had a main break.
There was three of them, two videos, one picture.
Like a, like a four inch.
It was in the same email.
And then since our plumbing is so old.
Separate email.
There's no direct shut off to our old cemetery building. It's shut off the water to our entire cemetery or just the building itself. But, so that, that got shut off. We rented a porta potty, which was still pretty cold outside, but we didn't complain. And then when we got quoted possibly what the excavation was for, we had to find a leak first. I'll let you know when we were driving by and then one of the graves, closed off one of the graves and it was just, little guys are coming up and we're like, y'all, that shouldn't be happening. So first we thought it was shutting off the water and then we started digging immediately and chasing it and.
How did you dig? Did you rent equipment?
No, we had, we had our excavator for it. So we used our three or four excavator and then.
How'd you break ground?
So that was before where our, which our fears was, what if, what if this pipe break is underneath the road? The asphalt road, which it was, which it was. So we got quoted about twelve thousand to, to find the dig, you know, clear that, clear the asphalt dig and then repair and then, you know, just to locate the leak, because they have to get their outside excavators and all that. And, you know, we, we saved the township quite a bit of money by finding it ourselves. So then we had, after, yeah, we rented concrete cutters to be able to cut our, our driveway exposed, maybe it was like from here to that table, maybe like a, like a ten or fifteen, fifteen foot section of road, which we closed off. But luckily. But luckily, uh, customers can still get around, just have to look around the longer side. Um, and then we dug, followed the, followed the leak, had lifeline come out and, uh, set, uh, repair the actual pipe itself. And then after that, um, the highway department was actually awesome enough to help us out with, um, with repairing that road back. So now road's back, back and covered and we're back in operation. So thank you for that information.
So the total cost was actually over fifteen thousand dollars. What the road district came in, we got a quote for fifty-three hundred dollars. So altogether, we saved a good amount of money. We ended up paying materials cost for the road district, which came in under a thousand, well under a thousand dollars. But overall, the road district and, uh, Eric or the cemetery crew, both of them, um, contributed seven, upwards of seventeen thousand dollars worth of work for us. That was remarkable. It's a dire situation, we had to fix it. Um, that said, uh, we went ahead and got them pizza for that.
It's a real, it's a difficult feeling for that, you know, and also like how, as, uh, when we're not completely swamped, I like to offer the, any of those kind of services to like open space. If you guys ever need something like that from us as well, we can, I know, we, we have, we, we can, we can flex our muscle and where, where it needs to, where it needs to get used. So we like, we like to lend a helping hand as well. So especially on stuff like this, where you can, uh, uh, save a bunch of money.
Yeah, but thank you to the commissioner for that, because he actually scoped and laid out this plan on a weekend in the morning. So, yeah, and then he was there before I was there at around seven-thirty in the morning onsite, getting this done with his crew. They are so, so efficient. Road district is remarkable with that. I, that's why I wanted to actually show you our mini excavator. Any luck, Liz?
I don't have a.
Oh, oh, sorry, it, I don't know why it's not going through, but I had great pictures. So they dug this hole, you could see all the layers of gravel and cobblestones and what have you. You could see the road districts, uh, Calvary coming through, you know? And, um, our mini excavator, which is performing remarkably, so. But anyway, all right, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, everyone.
Gabriella, EAGA, please.
Over the past month, we've assisted three residents, helping them successfully prevent eviction. Additionally, we supported one resident in avoiding utility disconnection. Uh, the last board meeting Supervisor Shaw did, uh, mention that we were opening, uh, pending disconnection for any utility for any resident. So I actually had a resident last month that I helped avoid any disconnection on their utility. Uh, we also had residents call for utility assistance. So, uh, there's a program called, uh, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, which is LIHEEP, that helps with your gas bill and your, uh, comm ed bill. And that we will do it here, but there's a, uh, organization that they can contact, community contacts in Elgin. And I've also, uh, printed flyers for residents who need it. Um, I can give it to them or I can enroll it to them, so they can have the, uh, program on their utility.
And I gave you a presentation on the CSBG that I learned from the TOI conference about. So we should, we should definitely look into it and the contacts for, it's like a LIHEEP type program. So we usually try to get involved with all sorts of programs and leverage help. So if we can certainly get the person out of their situation is usually when we move forward and approve.
Yes, that is correct. That's all I have for tonight's.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Gabriella. You guys can leave if you'd like to.
Okay.
All right, so the last report is from me. Uh, we met the cemetery admin, uh, Mrs. Vikar. The reason for her is because the cemetery is swamped. It's, we, ever since we've started opening the section, which we needed to, because we were almost out of the graves, seven months ago, when this administration came in. We had approximately thirteen, uh, to fifteen graves left and a couple of plots. At this point, uh, we're doing what normal cemeteries would do at our stature. So we are opening up a lot of graves and that project is on the way. Then we have this plumbing, we have this plumbing issue. We've got so many people that want to come in, talk to us about various different opportunities. And whether we want to expand on any of those business opportunities or what have you, I would still like to bring it to the board at least and the people. So I think that would be great to do. We also need to, um, look into the programs we use. Even DeKalb Township, which only has five acres of, uh, cemetery, has better, uh, software programs than us. So we need to look into those type of things and Ms. Vikar is, uh, well versed with all that. So she'll be a good addition to us. Um, as far as mental health board, police department counselor program, trustee Harney mentioned that we have spoken about it. Um, the disagreement that I have is that if Carpenter's Will is going to still exist with, uh, the current caseworker who has a provisional license, she does not have a full license. So in my opinion, if the mental health board is going to do something of this sort, then we need to have fully licensed people on board, uh, to, for our residents. Uh, she wouldn't, I'm sorry, I don't want to mention the names, I don't even know her personally, but the caseworker that we have, I'm sure she's wonderful. But she does have to report to a third party supervisor. So if we had in-house full license, then that would be the person she would report to. Second thing is if Carpenter's Will has their own program, then Dundee Township expands to Carpenter's Will, Sleepy Hollow, East Dundee, West Dundee. Carpenter's Will residents are paying twice via taxes, whereas Sleepy Hollow, East Dundee, West Dundee will pay one time. And Unincorporated Gilbert, Sparrington Hills, um, Elgin and Algonquin will just pay, receive no services. So I really strongly suggest that we table a lot of things, a lot of times. We should table it out and figure out the COD QAM issues or what have you. We should figure those out, table it, and then the mental health board should extend the services over to Dundee Township as whole. So that was my recommendation. Uh, volunteer appreciation dinner for Open Space, we had that last Friday. And, uh, I'm going to go ahead and say that we had fun. Okay, so if anybody disagrees, please raise your hand.
No, we had fun.
Okay, so we had, I think we had fun. Uh, Gabby and Maria helped put together a lot of this. Previous administrations started doing this four months ahead of time, when we found out it was already, you know, we were already that late. But we tried to make it up to them. So we had food outside there at the table. We had these new chairs, which we got from Wayfair with a fifteen percent discount, I'm very proud of, because we got two chairs free. So we had the other old chairs right here, everybody sat here. And then we gave them bento boxes. There are these lunch boxes for adults that you can sit at Open Space and have your first spring picnic. So we really hope that the volunteers felt appreciated. And we, we do very much value our volunteers here. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work at Open Space. The plumbing issue and the road district's help, we already went over that. Um, Schweitzer Woods, the twenty-year agreement is done and we spent upwards of about eight thousand dollars at the garage, with the garage door. Open Space had a moonlight insect walk event. And I cannot believe that we had, I counted, I lost count around eighty-five. So I'm guessing it had to have been at least eighty-five people, if not more. So, and it looked like it was at least a few more, okay? It was remarkable. That was a very good turnout, it was fantastic. So I suggest that maybe we should add one more for a spring walk. And then I've also learned that, uh, you could make things out of wood, um, from invasive species. So I see a business opportunity and I think we should explore it for our people, even if we don't make a lot of money. It's a service that we can provide. It would be very unique to give someone a fiddle, I'm calling, this is fiddle, right? Yeah, like, uh, it's.
Twiddle.
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 Oh, my lord, and it's on, we have record of it. Twiddle. Twiddle. So, yeah, go ahead.
I have spoken with Winnie and she's very excited about the idea of providing for us, so she's talking with her daughter and.
Those spoons are awesome.
Oh, that's remarkable. See, even if we could give at cost, we don't want to make, you know, we don't, we don't want to break our residents' backs, but we want to engage them with different things from Open Space. And I'm telling you, this twiddle, if you give it to somebody, it's unique, nobody else has it, okay? For your holiday, for your birthday, for your wedding, whatever, okay? It's there. I mean, even give it to, what do they call it, a gender revealing party, who cares, right? It's unique.
We also talked about maybe using it as a way to, to.
Make, yes, absolutely.
Give a certain amount, you get a twiddle.
Yep.
Do another amount, you might get a.
Right.
Hand carved spoon or.
Yeah. So I think trustees, you guys can definitely give us some ideas on what you want to do or what you think.
I really think a cookbook with all the little treats that the ladies make for the open, like our open space.
You mean Chef Carol?
Our open space picnics, like I think of like open space cookbook would be really cool.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Well, for right now, we need to get those orders in.
Yeah.
And how do you do that for, um, Christmas or what do you want to do?
Oh, they probably.
Okay, something like that.
Yeah, she won't have.
Okay, so Valentine's Day.
She's like an older.
Next Christmas.
She's gonna be sitting like.
You guys, this is recorded.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and I think we should say that what we're talking about here is hand carved spoons. There's a woman up where June and I vacation up in Ely, Minnesota, she's ninety years old, she's in a wheelchair. And, um, she makes hand carved wooden spoons out of waste wood that people bring her. So June and Steve Keebler have been taking up chunks of buckthorn and honeysuckle that they've, you know, that normally we burn up on the Open Space. And take it up there and Winnie makes these great spoons out of them.
Yeah.
So that's what we're talking about, it's really cool. And June and I have both bought a number of them and one of them is called an Ely Twiddle. And it's, um, it's a little device, it's a wooden spoon type device, but you can get the corners of your pan scraped out with it.
I'm never cooking with that, it's.
Oh, I use it for my sourdough.
Oh, gosh.
No, it's good.
You guys are awful, it's a masterpiece, it stays in. Yeah, I don't even allow anyone to breathe around it. But anyways, so there is that, so we are definitely looking, if you know any woodworkers that can add to it, you know, uh, locally, that would be great. Yeah.
Sue Bone's daughter is.
Okay.
Trying to hand it.
Yeah.
Trying to explain.
So, yeah, let's get creative with that. Um, that is all I have for that.
Can I correct you on one thing? We had the moonwalk?
Yes.
We had everything but the moon.
Ah, you're right.
Yes.
But didn't, we didn't have insects either.
We didn't need it.
We didn't have insects.
It was too cold for insects.
Yeah.
FDNA did all that and congratulations, you guys, that was a really outstanding, outstanding event. It's really, I've had people approach me afterwards and ask to be guided around again.
Yeah.
During the daytime when you can see things, because without the moon, it was.
Uh, it was definitely cool at night.
Yeah.
It's very fun.
It was cool, you know.
No, this wasn't a complaint.
No.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Yeah. That's right, that's right. Okay, so we will move on over to approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the October fifteen, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes as presented?
Oh, my.
Okay, uh, all right, so the motion was made by trustee Day and seconded by trustee, uh, Fixmer?
Can I have, I have one small question.
Okay.
Um, paragraph B on the front page, uh, four lines down. Um, it says, the, um, the appointments are generally made at the December, it should be the December, December Township Board meeting, not the seven oh eight board meeting.
I can correct this.
Okay, that's my only one.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, then the motion carries and the minutes are approved as presented.
We didn't vote.
We what?
We need to go. We didn't vote.
Oh, god. Yeah, we just motioned, okay. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harman?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries and the minutes are approved as presented. Next up is a treasurer's report. Um, unfortunately, we do not have Tom, he had a family emergency today, so we're going to move forward. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented? We need a motion, I can make the motion.
I'll move too. I'll move.
Okay. So the motion is made by me and, um, moved by trustee Harney. Is there a discussion?
I have some huge concerns and we need to discuss it. Uh, maybe not today, but, um, it needs to be addressed, I think. We have, um, literally, I think seventeen line items that are over budget. That, uh, anywhere from a hundred and three percent to two hundred and sixty-eight percent of the budgeted amount. And, um, I'm not suggesting that we don't pay these bills. I am strongly suggesting that we need to do budget transfers and to get this fixed. Because if our budget is to mean anything, it has to be budget that we stick to. And when we don't, we have to transfer money in. As I said, there are like seventeen line items that are over budget, anywhere from a hundred and three percent. And then there are three, two or three items that are at a hundred percent. And, um, I was going to ask Tom about one of them today and I will call him about it. But, um, the other, the, you know, connected to this concern is we are literally two-thirds of the way through our budget year. And to have this many line items over budget is really, really concerning. We simply can't keep doing this. We, we have to, the money, I don't know where the money's going to come from, that's something that the supervisor's office is going to have to do. But the budget, the money has to be transferred out of other accounts. And, um, and it, it needs to happen at the next meeting. It absolutely does.
Okay, so.
Supervisor, would you like me to?
Yes, please, counsel.
Okay.
Yes.
So from a legal perspective, in Illinois, um, you, the requirement is not necessarily that each line item is correct. It's actually that you don't exceed the total appropriated fund for a specific fund. So at this, at any time, a township actually can amend the budget line items with a fund up to ten percent. So I think that's a roughly one million, one point five million, correct? Okay, so I understand your concern, um, and I, we appreciate that you bring it up. Um, but the township is just required to remain within the total appropriation adopted within each fund. Um, and we are well within those limits right now. Um, so, you know, these specific line items overages are due to timing, one-time expenses such as, you know, cemetery pipe bursting. Uh, vendors, et cetera. So we will continue to monitor this, um, and if needed, present a year-end budget amendment to keep the fund compliant. But at this particular moment, there is no legal or financial concern with us going over each line item.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know when Tom reports these, but should it be now? Do you suppose? He just reports these figures, so I need to say them. It's either there or.
No, that's in the next section.
This one, audit and approve.
Mm-hmm.
All right, okay, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harman?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries and the treasurer's report is here by approved as presented. Next up is audit and approval of payroll, excuse me, and bills for road district general assistance town fund as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, is there a second?
You need to read them first.
Okay, sorry. All right, sorry, this is usually Tom's job. So town fund, these are the fund balances we have currently. Town fund is one million, six hundred thousand thirteen, six hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. GA has two hundred and fifty-four, four thirty-eight. Cemetery has one million, ten eight six nine. Road and Bridge is two million, six hundred sixty-two, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Seven oh eight Mental Health Board, eight hundred sixty-eight, one twenty-one. And then for capital, we have five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is made by trustee Day and seconded by, uh, trustee Fixmer. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Uh, we didn't discuss anything.
Oh, we can discuss.
Does anybody have anything to discuss? No, okay, yes.
Uh, Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harman?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries and the payment of bills for road district general assistance town fund is approved as presented. The first item of new business is estimate of fiscal year twenty twenty-six levy for Dundee Township. Okay, each deci-. Each December, the Board of Trustees must determine the annual tax levy for the Township and the Road District. Tonight, in accordance with Illinois law, we will consider the estimate of the levy for Township. Unfortunately, Tom, our accountant, was unable to be with us here this evening. However, he prepared an estimated levy for the Township and the Road District. Counselor, would you please provide a report?
Happy to. So thank you, Madam Supervisor. Happy to. So thank you, Madam Supervisor. Um so a copy of.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm not allowed to have these things.
There's napkins right there by the cups.
Um alright, so.
Do we have anything in front of us with this?
So the discussion points are up there and there should be a copy of the presentation. Perfect, okay. Um so the primary source of revenue to operate the township is property taxes. Um so last year, the property taxes made up seventy-eight percent of the total revenue for the township. Um the consumer price index this year is two point nine percent, um which will limit overall increase on prior year's extension. Um the township equalized asset value is estimated to increase a total of ten percent to roughly three billion. Um new growth, and this is obviously construction, all of those that we've done the past year, um is estimated to be fifteen point five million. Um so therefore, the maximum extension expected to increase um around three point four three percent. Um so because that's less than the five percent publication, um uh sorry, because it's less than five percent, the publication or hearing is not required under the Truth and Taxation Act. Um so our recommendation, in order to ensure the township captures new growth to the greatest extent possible, would be to levy four point nine percent for both the township and the road and bridge fund. Um more than likely, we would be limited um to the rate of three point four three percent. Um but if we do the four point nine nine percent, this would account for the minimum up to that full amount. Um for the township, the proposed levy for fiscal year beginning April first, twenty twenty-six and ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven is as follows. General Town Fund, one million, seven hundred, ninety thousand, eight hundred, fifty dollars and zero cents. General Assistance Fund, one hundred thousand dollars and zero cents. Mental Health Services, five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents. For estimated total tax levy of two million, three hundred, ninety thousand, eight hundred, fifty dollars and zero cents. That concludes my report.
Okay. So those are the funds there and then that's the next slide. You can skip through. So we have two towns in there for comparison.
And the numbers I just read off are in the yellow box, if that helps. Okay, any questions?
I can't read them. Um I, I do, yeah, I do.
Okay.
I have a, a concern. Um the mental health seven oh eight board requested a five hundred thousand dollar levy, which cap is what it's been the past couple of years. But what that does is it greatly limits the mental health board's ability to fund the um the programs that are, that are requested by the different agencies. It also um in the paperwork that we were given, I have a great concern that limiting it to that five hundred thousand is gonna leave us, the mental health board, with less than enough money to operate come January because there's that five month stretch of time between January and May when there's no tax revenue. Um there's also, we just approved six hundred and whatever, ten thousand dollars worth of um of a program for um this coming year. Um again, I'm skeptical of the, the numbers that we were given at the mental health board meeting. Uh we're gonna have them reviewed by Tom at some point, but I would like to up the mental health levy and put it up to eight hundred and fifty, maybe nine hundred thousand dollars. Um that will give us enough money to add to the programming if we need to. And it will also give us a cushion because I have uh the supervisor and I have some agreement that we would like to see the social, the police social worker program expanded. And this will give us some leeway to do that over the next year. It's capped at a hundred and twenty thousand this, for this current pilot program part, which serves eighty-seven point something percent of the people in the township. The goal is to expand it to a hundred percent as quickly as possible, the service area. And the other goal is, from my perspective, not the whole boards, but my perspective, is to expand the number of social workers as well. So that's my rationale for bumping up the levy for the mental health board, which is not controlled by the P T O. So um we would be able, I think, to do that.
So does the board have to vote on it, uh seven oh eight board?
No, they do not. This is, the township board sets the levy.
Mm-hmm.
That's our, at our discretion. The seven oh eight board does the budget at their discretion. And so we have two new members coming on as of January first. Hopefully, they will be more amenable. There is discussion, there is um, there's a lot going on between the different agencies that are involved in everything. A lot of fluidity, a lot of ability for some changes that um that are possible.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Questions? Okay, thank you, Counselor. Um.
Oh, we have.
Is there, oh, yes. Mister Schaefer. Absolutely.
I believe right now you have eight hundred thirty thousand dollars in the mental health board. You could function all of next year to your fiscal year with that amount of money. So with the amount of five hundred thousand, you're gonna end up like one point three million in your budget. Um and the mental health board provides a recommendation to the township board. The township has to set the levy, but I think it would be inappropriate for the township board to go against what the mental health board is asking for. Especially when financially you're sitting in a very good position right now. And the purpose of the mental health board is to help the residents of Dundee Township. How much money does that take and what programs? It's not there just to spend the money. It is there to define programs and it's not what uh you have agencies asking for. There's a want and a need. And your needs assessment from two years ago said there's about fourteen hundred people that are not receiving services or uh can't get services. Um and how much money do you need to serve fourteen hundred people? And in that same time, Dundee Township has gone down by about a thousand residents also. So I am interested in why would you ask for more money for and my feeling is the social work program's probably good. You have three social workers covering all of Dundee or all of King County with about four hundred thousand residents and I'm not sure why you would need three.
You mean McHenry County?
Just to cover, just to cover um Dundee Township.
Did you mean McHenry County?
No, King County.
Okay.
There's free services and realistically, running it out of King County and expanding their program for Dundee Township would make more sense than um limiting it to a certain number of cities that you pay out right now without spending the services.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
A couple of points. You make some good points, Ken. Um the first thing is King County, uh this has been an ongoing discussion for well over a decade. And because of the mental health um um organizations, the townships in the southern and mid part of the county already have their mental health services all in place. They are opposed to expanding it countywide. So that is something that certainly, a num- no, you're done talking. I get to talk now. Um that is something that the entire mental health board is very interested in doing. But it is not anything that's gonna happen anytime soon. Multiple of the last two county board chairs, we have to address this. And it is not something that's going to happen. In fact, one of the members of the mental health board, Chris Kemp, made it his um goal at the beginning of his four-year term, which is now ending in December, to list the county and do this countywide. He has been unsuccessful in moving the county in any way, shape or form. So that is something that's in the future and if that works out, if that works out, then that will be fine, but it's not in the offing right now. I disagree with, I'm, excuse me, Ken, I am talking, alright? You are not talking. I disagree with you heartily. The mental health board has appointees that were appointed by the last um, the last board. And controlling costs and reducing services was a major objective for that board. The people on this board campaigned, including myself, on expanding those services. And that's exactly what I'm recommending as a member of the mental health board and the liaison between the township and the mental health board. Um again, we had over seven hundred thousand dollars worth of requests. We looked at those. We um decided a few of them did not fit. But the rest of them, we think, do fit. And so by the time that six hundred and ten thousand dollars is spent, we can go out for additional, um you know, uh R F Ps for additional services. And if we want to have the ability and the flexibility to expand the social worker program, we will need more money. And to your point about the social workers not being needed, um this is an area that is up. Dundee Township is one of the areas in King County that is showing increasing need for um uh addiction services and other mental health services. It's been climbing with the county's uh needs assessment over the past decade. And so this is a great need up here. We have the voters. They have given us permission and they have given us a warrant or direction to do this. Um I've been talking to Chief Green, who's the West Dundee Police Chief. He is a strong proponent of expanding this to three social workers or possibly four in Dundee Township, based on his work in Schaumburg Township. They had a double-digit decrease in crisis calls within six months of creating their social worker police program that runs out of their police department. So those are the reasons that I have um brought forward as a reason to expand the funding. I think we should provide the services sooner rather than later. And if it turns out at the end of the year that we are sitting on a pot of money, it's very easy to lower the levy for next year or abate taxes if we can do that. So my recommendation stands that we, that we levy eight hundred and fifty thousand for the mental health board.
Um so, but that is not what this is for today, right?
Yeah, this, the mental health levy's in here.
No, I understand that. This is just, it's not for a vote today, right?
So we're not voting on this today. I will caution, unfortunately, we already had public comments, so we cannot take any more comments from the audience at this time. Um I will caution from a legal standpoint, um I just wanna make sure my numbers are correct. So the mental health board or any portion that's levied cannot be more than two point five the annual operating, annual average operating expenses for the past three years. Otherwise, you will receive a tax objection and we will have to, and I have before for multiple different townships, had to defend on the behalf of the township for this. So I would caution you when you're exponentially adding the numbers to this levy, particularly when they're asking for only five hundred thousand, you will probably more than likely be kicked with a tax objection from the Attorney General's Office.
Even though we, we're no longer, the mental health board is not governed by P T O?
The.
Or not, not limited by P T O, is my understanding.
This isn't, this isn't P T O, this is separate. Yes, this is separate. So the mental, you're right, the mental health board would be kicked with this, not the township.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's good to know. No, I did not know that.
Okay, so um I forgot now where we were.
You're okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the estimate of tax levy for Dundee Township? Road District for tax year twenty twenty-five, collecting in twenty twenty-six as presented by counsel.
Wait, why is it just for road?
Are we voting? Just hang on.
I don't understand what we're doing.
So you're just.
We should have had the discussion then.
So we had the discussion. We're not voting on the actual.
Levy.
Levy.
It's just the estimate we're voting on.
Okay.
Is that right? The estimate is what, that's just what is presented? Okay, so that is what we are voting on, that the estimate is okay to move forward with?
You're, you're voting on the estimate being published for thirty days.
Right.
Okay, alright, I understand that.
Yeah, so let me change the language. Okay, so um. Can we get a motion? Counsel, can you help me? Can we get a motion for? Can we get a motion for um estimate of fiscal year twenty twenty-six levy for Dundee Township?
Okay, I will move to publish.
To publish.
The, the estimate.
Yes.
At four point nine nine percent. And I would like the mental health levy, this is an estimate, we can change it at the next time, to be at eight hundred and fifty thousand. We can change that down the road. We don't have to stick with that, right? Like when, we, we might finalize it?
Yeah, but knowing what the counselor, one second, knowing what the counselor has just said, um I cannot put the township at risk. So I will not put the township at risk. So I either abstain or my vote would be no for that. But yeah, go ahead.
Like I, my understanding of this process is that um this is an estimate that will be published. And that thirty days from now, we can change the figures in there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my motion is that we publish the levy as presented with a four point nine nine percent increase for the township and with eight hundred and fifty thousand as the levy for the mental health board. With the idea that if it puts the township at risk, we can alter that when we do the final.
But it's already advised against. So how can we, in good conscience, do something that literally in a public meeting was advised against by our council, that we retain with taxpayer dollars?
I would say right now, I would say no to that because of that very reason.
Okay.
Because.
Yeah.
This is, according to counsel, ill-advised.
So can we raise the levy at all for the mental health board?
You can, however, at the same time, the mental health board was asking for five hundred thousand. So why would you go against what they're asking for?
Because the present, the, the figures that were presented to us at the mental health board leave me with concern that we will be out of money and not able to, to pay things unless we cut back the grant parts by January. And that's my point. You know, this is not final at this point.
But we have reserves, right, that we can?
No, we, the, the mental health board doesn't have reserves. That they've essentially allocated a majority of the money that they have in their budget right now.
But why don't we have those figures? We've never seen those figures. Has anybody seen those figures as to what we have? What will, what will we be at, at the point you're describing?
We are going, we can get them. That's my point.
I know, but why isn't it already here considering that the levy time after time, year after year, is at the same year? It's like a birthday. It doesn't change, right? So why don't we already have it? Why are we not prepared?
The mental health board gave us what they think is five hundred thousand.
But they, but at the time.
My point here is that looking at those figures as a mental health board um member, I had questions about it and the person who did that was out of town. And we had not had time at that point for Tom or uh somebody from the, the um the bookkeeping department to go through those figures and tell us if we had enough. My point is that, like, I guess we could do it either way. We could raise it after we get those figures as well. But what we're doing by that is we're going against what we campaigned for. We all campaigned to increase the mental health levy.
No, I never campaigned to go against legal counsel.
But we can reduce that amount.
Irrespective of everything, I never campaigned to put the township in any sort of trouble going against the council. So.
If counsel would say that if we raised it to six hundred thousand and would, we would not be in legal trouble?
So I'm not gonna put my mouth in exact numbers because frankly, I haven't seen the exact numbers. So I don't know if that means it's over the allotted amount. Um I, I do know that every fiscal year, the mental health board should be producing financial plans um for the next one and three year periods because they are fiduciaries of this budget, similar to the township, which means they need plans to show where those taxpayer dollars are going.
Which they have. And this, that's the thing that you guys got that, that's in your packet.
So.
The six hundred and ten thousand.
So if you guys want to revise that fiscal plan and submit something different, that's okay. We can. This is something where it can change before the final budget is done. We just need to give the taxpayers time to see it.
Okay.
Yep.
Because my confusion has just been if we're. I guess my confusion has just been if we're giving out six hundred and ten thousand, why are we only asking for five hundred? I don't wanna go over what we're allotted. So I guess to me, there's a little bit of confusion why we're promising six hundred and ten, but not, but only asking for five hundred. But at the same time, I know we have, um, in the bank or in the reserves or whatever it is, we have extra. So there's like a lot of different numbers that to me aren't quite adding up.
I think it's enormously confusing for the people on the mental health board as well. And that, that's been the discussion, is that because it's not just the six hundred and ten thousand that we've allocated now for the different agencies that have presented programs. It's the hundred and twenty thousand for the police social worker program. So you have to add that on to it. And the, the fiscal years and the grant years are slightly different. And so, and, and then we always have the factor that between January and May, there's no income for the mental health board. There's nothing coming in, but bills still go out and get paid. You know, organizations are still submitting bills for treatment. The, the, the staff needs to be paid, the administrative assistant needs to be paid, and.
Right, so administrative assistant, why didn't the administrative assistant have the figures ready for us today?
Because she's been there for less than thirty days. We have a transition.
So she getting paid, uh, a transitional fee, so to speak?
She's an interim. We, we are in the middle of things. She's, is an interim administrative assistant.
Getting paid eighty thousand or what have you?
I don't know what she's getting paid and what, what her.
Wasn't it announced?
It's, it was in the paperwork and I don't remember it.
Okay.
But yes, she's being paid, but she's in transition. And she, the work that was done was done by a gentleman on the board as a volunteer. You know, the, the projections and everything, and those were my questions. He was out of town, so he couldn't answer the questions. She does not have the background to know at this point. And so here we are in transition. And what I'm trying to do is give the mental health board enough money to be able to work through the next year and not find themselves in a position in January or February or March where payments can't be made that need to be made.
I still think that if all of our people cannot get the services equally, cannot be treated equally, because we did not run to mistreat people or treat them unequally in any way, shape, or form. It can be done. You can table it. You can make it happen. So why don't we just table it and extend that program to Dundee Township? I don't like that certain people are going to pay but not receive anything. How can you make a choice that you will pay but you will not receive anything? You will pay twice and you'll receive something. You will just watch.
The choice is now being negotiated between the different agencies. The fact that it's not perfect, if we postpone this for six months, it'll be a year before it's put in place. So another year where nobody gets services. And that's not fair either. We have, we're serving over eighty-seven percent of the people in the township, getting this pilot program through with the goal of as soon as possible getting to a hundred percent. And that is a logistics type of situation of figuring out how the calls are going to be routed, uh, routed around and how they're going to be, um, allocated. In other words, somebody calls in. You have to figure out where they live. Are they inside the township? Are they in that little slip of, uh, you know, split of Gilberts over there? And those things take a little time. So do we deny eighty-seven percent of the people's services for a year so we can make sure that that last thirteen percent gets full services? Or do we just do a pilot program and work through? Because we will find ways to get that done by starting the program and getting it started and serving the eighty-seven percent.
If we were to hire a contractor.
I'm sorry, we need to go back to what we're talking about on the agenda, and this is not what's at issue right now. What we need to talk about is this budget.
Yeah.
And if we are going to approve this estimated budget to be published. If we do not approve it to be published, then there needs to be a special meeting. And that will be soon so that we can get it within the timeline. So are we going to approve or not? That's what's my question right now.
My question is, if we approve it as it is right now, if we get more information from the mental health board, can we adjust the number?
Yes.
Yes.
And then we can also have more information on what, what would not cause a tax objection?
I, I can't speak to that because I'm not gonna give the presentation that would answer that question, but in theory.
Information to help us make.
In theory, you could get that presentation to help you. I just can't answer whether you will get that or not, because I don't. I'm just counsel.
Who would give us that presentation, i- if not the mental health board?
They're in charge of the budget, so it's them. They would have.
They're the ones that would do the, the presentation about the tax, about the tax objection? Or would it be Tom, maybe?
There, there would be no presentation about a tax objection. It would be a presentation on what they believe the budget should be.
Okay.
Because if they need six hundred and ten thousand dollars, I want them to have that. But if they only need five hundred, then we can deal with that. But I want them to, I wanna make sure they have what they need for what they've promised. And I just wanna make sure that we're making the right choices here.
Okay, so again, to publish this estimate, can we get a motion?
I will make the motion to publish the estimate at four point nine nine percent with the mental health board at the five hundred thousand.
Okay, and second please?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Day. So we had our discussion. Any other questions? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day.
So if we vote no, that causes.
This is just to the publish.
Okay.
The estimate.
Trustee Drake.
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer.
Yes.
Trustee Harney.
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw.
Yes. Okay.
Could I ask you if we could give a quick pause?
Yeah, give me one second. So the motion carries and the estimate to pu- to publish, the motion carries and we will be publishing the estimate at four point nine nine percent levy. Okay.
I'm joining.
I'm just gonna brave it.
Yes, unfortunately, I, it's.
It's a tough.
It's just my, it's, that's being counsel, as you advise, I can't make decisions. I'm not elected to the board.
You said it's ten percent over the operating budget, is that what you said?
No, so are you talking about which part? The, the line items or are you talking about mental health board?
I'm trying to understand the, um, mental health board levy.
Uh, yes, yes, yes. So the issue is you can't be two point five times over your, yes, that the ten percent was the line item issue. No, 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 it's okay. There's a lot of numbers being thrown around tonight. Yeah, yeah, no, there's a lot of numbers being thrown around tonight, I understand. The issue is that you can't have two point five over three, so the past three years of operating budgets, you can't be two point five over that. And so, and I, I can speak to this because I, I literally have a tax objection case tomorrow and I had one this morning. It's not fun for anyone involved. And there's a lot of numbers. Please don't make me write them. So, no, but in all honesty, we just, I, as counsel, I can't in good conscience.
Right.
Not say that.
Yeah.
Right, and I appreciate that so much.
So.
I mean, I know you're just.
It's why we're here. Yeah, and then you have to understand, right, Henry, that at some point, if we do this in our very first year, pick and choose the crowd and then pick and choose how much money who gets, like, mental health board gets.
Um, I would, this is not for now. This is not for now.
We're sitting kind of in a forum here.
Yes, not for now.
Can we, I'm like braving it to use the facilities. Can we like hurry up and finish this? Gosh.
Well, are you sure you don't want to? Because we have one, two, three more things.
I know, we have to. We're just gonna plow through, hopefully. Yeah, I was sick, I'll be at home, I was just.
This was the only one I was gonna be a pill about, so.
Okay, so should I reconvene the meeting? We still have the quorum or do I need to announce that?
No, you need to re-adjourn or reconvene, sorry.
Okay, so we will.
Not re-adjourn.
We will reconvene at nine PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Here, you need to get everyone's attention to calm down.
Everyone, we will reconvene now at nine PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day.
Here.
Trustee Drake.
Here.
Trustee Fixmer.
Here.
Trustee Harney.
Here.
Supervisor Shaw.
Here. Okay, so, um, the next item on, of new business is consideration for twenty twenty-six township holiday schedule. Is there a motion to approve the township?
You missed the road districts.
Road district.
Road districts? Oh, road districts levy, my gosh, okay. Uh, can we get a motion to, just, can we get a motion?
Is it not?
Oh, we did, we did do it, right, that?
No, we did earlier. We're here.
Oh, my lord. Okay. The next item of new business is estimate of fiscal year twenty twenty-six levy for Dundee Township Road District. Counsel?
All right, so consistent with what I previously reported along with all of the numbers, new growth, PTAL, et cetera, the recommendation for the road district is as follows. General Road and Bridge Fund, one million nine hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and zero cents. Insurance Fund should be fifty thousand and zero cents. Illinois Municipal Retirement should be thirty thousand and zero cents. Social Security Fund, thirty-five thousand and zero cents. Equipment and Building Fund, two hundred thousand and zero cents for estimated total tax levy of two million, two hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and zero cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there a motion to approve the estimate of tax levy for Dundee Township Road District for tax year twenty twenty-five, collecting in ten, twenty twenty-six as presented by the council? This is.
Second.
Okay, so it, the motion is made by trustee Fixmer and, uh, seconded by trustee Drake. Is there a discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day.
Yes.
Trustee Drake.
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer.
Yes.
Trustee Harney.
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw.
Yes. Okay, the motion carries and the estimate of fiscal year twenty twenty-six levy for Dundee Township Road District is approved as presented. The next item for new business, consideration of twenty twenty-six township holiday schedule. Is there a motion to approve the township holiday schedule as presented?
Um, motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by trustee Day and seconded by trustee Drake. Is there a discussion?
Only thing is, I wish we got this sooner, so we could have looked it over.
Oh, I mean, it's pretty much the same thing that we've always had. Yeah, except for there is an election day which does not, you know, it's not there. All right, so, um, thank you, now I'm lost. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day.
Yes.
Trustee Drake.
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer.
Yes.
Trustee Harney.
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw.
Yes, the motion carries and the township holiday schedule is approved as presented. The next item for new business is consideration of twenty twenty-six Township Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule. Is there a motion? Okay, second please?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by trustee Drake and seconded by trustee Dr- uh, Day.
Said by each other, Drake and Day, it's confusing.
Uh, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day.
Yes.
Trustee Drake.
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer.
Yes.
Trustee Harney.
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw.
Yes, the motion carries and the Township Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule is approved as presented. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion to adjourn is made by trustee Drake and seconded by trustee Day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, any abstentions? Ayes have it and we are adjourned at nine oh five PM.